This means nothing, certainly.
Yes.
Yeah.
Everybody ready? Okay.
Somebody's spanking.
Good evening. I'll call the July 14th, 2015 Planning Board to Order. Planning Board meeting to order. The first item on the agenda tonight are the minutes from May 26, June 30, and July 7. Mr. Secretary, what do we have on?
Recommend approval of all three minutes. Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Unanimous? Next item on the agenda is approval not required of plans. Do we have any plans submitted? So we do not. Moving right along then, we're moving to a decision. The applicant Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute has special permit to reduce the number of parking spaces required to serve dormitory under construction at 85 Oyster Pond Road, a portion of 270 Woods Hole Road, plans by Holmes and McGrath.
Okay. Motion that the planning board vote to approve the special permit application of the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute, who we under Article One, General Provisions, Chapter 340, the zoning bylaw for town of Falmouth for a plan entitled Site Plan for Quissette Dormitory Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute, 85D Oyster Pond Road, Falmouth, Mass., 02540, prepared by Holmes and McGrath dated April 30, 2015, scale one inch equals 20 feet with the following findings and conditions. The applicant seeks a special permit to construct 11 of the required 20 parking spaces for a parking reduction of nine spaces under Section 240, 2.1. A. This section of the bylaw states this chapter shall not prohibit, regulate, or restrict the use of the land or structures for religious purposes or for educational purposes on land owned or leased by the Commonwealth or any of its agencies, subdivisions, or bodies, politics, or by a religious sect or denominations, or by a nonprofit educational corporation. However, such land or structures shall be subject to the regulations concerning the bulk and height of structures, yard sizes, lot area setbacks, open space, parking and building coverage requirements found in the Falmouth zoning bylaw unless by special permit the planning board grants relief from these dimensional regulations as applied to exempt uses subject to the criteria set forth in Article, what's that, 17?
Forty-two.
Forty-two.
Yeah, I was like...
I slut from numerals, what can I say?
XL 1-1.
Yeah, XL 1-1. Who is a nonprofit educational corporation and the planning board finds that most of the students housed in the proposed dormitory will not be arriving with private vehicles. The planning board finds that the transportation systems in place, including shuttle service and the bike way connection, are adequate to meet the needs of a mostly seasonal student population. Furthermore, the board shall condition this decision to require that the space be reserved to expanding the parking lot if necessary. Conditions: One, who we shall reserve adequate space to build an additional nine parking spaces in the future if it is demonstrated to be necessary.
Second?
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Ralph? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. Set discussion. Applicant Woods Hole Golf Club Site Plan Review to reconstruct golf course clubhouse and facilities located at 130 Quissette Avenue, plans by Holmes and McGrath. For the applicant?
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Oh, the notices. Go ahead. Sorry, you were looking at me. I should have realized that was the chair.
The notice of public meeting was held, was published on 7/3/15. 14 of butters were notified by regular mail.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Bob Amment, as you know, and I'm here tonight representing the Woods Hole Golf Club. Also with me from my office is Attorney Jacqueline Downey, Raul Lizardi Rivera, is an engineer who's with Holmes and McGrath, and Mark Hissell is here. He is one of the chairman of the golf club's building committee. The Woods Hole Golf Club is really, for Falmouth, a venerable institution. It was founded in 1899. By 1917, the entire golf club, golf course property had been assembled, property on both sides of Quissette Avenue, and on August 21, 1921, the existing clubhouse, today's clubhouse, was dedicated. So we have a building which is nearing 100 years old, and the golf club proposes to replace it. Its systems are old, it has various features which are problematic, no bathroom facilities, for instance, on the main dining level, ceilings are low. This is a good time to build a new facility for the next 100 years, and that's what the golf club proposes to do. The proposed new clubhouse will be on the same site as the existing building, so let me demonstrate or show you where that is. The plan that you're looking at here is a plan of the existing clubhouse. Here it is. There's some outdoor dining space adjacent to the building over here, a porch and a covered patio, but this is our present building. Notice that one feature of it is a bit of parking on its upper level. These are topo lines showing the drop in elevation down to a lower parking area. Notice that there's no access to the west side of the property for any kind of fire protection over on this side. The new clubhouse is somewhat larger, but in the same location. This dark line is the existing clubhouse which I just described. Except for handicap parking, we're going to eliminate the parking that's right in front of the clubhouse. One of the things that the present clubhouse doesn't have is good dining space outdoors looking out over to Buzzards Bay. One of the detriment to the existing clubhouse is that when you're looking towards Buzzards Bay, you're looking over cars that are parked. So one goal is to make the drop-off area work better and to eliminate parking from right outside in front of the clubhouse on this side of the building. So an expanded oval is to be created. We have plans that show the movement of emergency vehicles around that oval. And also, this portion of this cart path is really designed to be widened up and to support heavy emergency trucks that could go in here, they'd have to back out, but it allows for fire department access. We're going to rework the parking area, so there actually are more parking spaces in this area, and yet it's shifted a little bit so that doesn't extend out in front of the golf course view towards the water. The purpose of these renovations are really to provide a better clubhouse for the current membership. The intention is not to expand the membership or to change the use of the property, but to provide different dining opportunities and to be able to separate different uses. So there could be a small function in the main dining area, which is not for any greater capacity than exists today, but there will be spaces more for more informal dining at the same time. And whereas now there is, as I mentioned, outdoor dining space facing the south of the property towards the, actually the ninth fairway, there'll be opportunities to dine on both sides of the building so that one could look out over the water. The golf club presently has 123 parking spaces on site with the elimination of most of the spaces up near the building, except for handicap spaces. That'd be a net reduction of 17 paved parking spaces. The proposal that the golf club has is to identify an area along the driveway where 17 additional lawn parking spaces can be located. Over the years, the golf club has been using not only the paved parking areas, but this existing grass parking, which is at least 20 feet deep, cars park entirely off of the driveway. When there's a need, the parking requirement is to, under our zoning bylaw, is to provide enough spaces for normal demand. On those occasions when more parking is needed, there's plenty of space to put it on this well-prepared, level, grassy area. The golf club is particularly well-equipped with the grounds crew and equipment to maintain that area, and given the seasonal nature of the golf course, those spaces wouldn't necessarily, would rarely need to be plowed in the winter. In addition, you may remember that a maintenance building, a new maintenance building was approved across Quissette Avenue last year, or probably in 2013, and that involved the creation of enough parking spaces for the entire staff, 44 spaces there. There are also some additional parking spaces at another maintenance building across the street so that when necessary, staff can park entirely across the street. The golf club has shuttle capacity. It actually has a vehicle, that is a licensed vehicle, that's going to be used for transporting staff to and from their cars. So 123 spaces exist today, 123 spaces are proposed in this plan. Somewhat more of the spaces will be grass. There are 78 parking spaces that are paved today. Proposal is for 61 parking spaces that would be paved, and the rest of the spaces reaching the same number will be on that lawn area. And again, even though the, sometimes parking is along the road here, again, the golf club has a whole series of golf carts and people who can drive them, so they actually shuttle people. If they park down here for there's an event, a luncheon like there was today when the golf club is relatively busy, then they're equipped to pick up people and bring them right to the clubhouse, of course, on the same property. So this project is on a 46-acre piece of property. The building at its closest point to sideline is 220 feet. It's 920-some feet away from Quissette Avenue, the closest street. Gansett Avenue is actually, Grantset Road is close, but there's actually a strip of property owned by the Gansett Trust that doesn't provide any frontage for that street, about 300 feet away from the clubhouse. There are no close, that is very close, residential neighbors, and the project should have no greater impact on the community or the neighborhood than at present. The driveway, of course, goes out to Quissette Avenue, and across the street is nine more holes of the golf course, actually more than nine holes, I guess there are 13, 14 holes on that side of the street. You have a referral from the engineering department, you have a referral from the fire department. Fire department would like the maximum turning radius we can get. We've done that, and Raul has plans to give you that show, that turning movements. We are going to go to the zoning board, appeals if required, for a special permit for alternative surface parking. Do you have any questions for Raul or myself for having to answer them? I should mention, we've brought a model. You don't always get to see this type of a thing. It shows that oval area described, it shows the changes in the parking. It also shows the design of the building, which is going to be very attractive, and you can see how it's designed so that there's outdoor dining opportunities both to the north and to the south of the building. So I know some of you have already taken a look at that. Thank you.
Yes?
Just a question about the alternate surface parking. Is, your proposal is to be able to park on the lawn along the driveway. Is that the issue with the zoning board that you need to resolve?
As I think, sorry about the zoning board, I don't want to go into any more detailing of this, not even too much. The golf club is a nonconforming use, which predates zoning. The building at present is conformant dimensionally. The proposed building would be conventionally conformant. This question, we don't have a special permit needed at all. We've applied for a special permit. We're not sure whether further discussions between the planning staff and the building commission and the, I don't know, might lead to a conclusion, we don't need a special permit. If we do need a special permit, it would not be for the use, which is a nonconforming use of the, isn't allowed without a special permit in residential zoning district, what we predate. We need a special permit because of the parking, and we're actually, the existing condition with the grass parking, it's an existing condition, although we're showing these spaces, 17, an area suitable for 17 spaces over there, except for one tree, this space already is suitable.
You can't, there's a TV saying it can't hear you.
So there really isn't a change in the parking arrangement. What's new in the last couple of years is having the excess parking across the street as needed.
Yes, Paul?
If I may have a couple of questions. Number one is the elevation of the clubhouse is about 96, the parking is around 82. That's difference to 14 feet, and then the access is through the stairway coming up. Is that correct? Are you also proposing there to be shuttle service from the lower parking area up to the area as well as where you come in on the access road?
We have some handicap access spaces at the same level as the entrance to the clubhouse over here. The building, of course, with the elevator equipped. We, of course, have the ability to have shuttle service as needed for people, again, because of all the golf carts, and it's not just the normal two-person golf carts. The club has a number of larger golf cart-type vehicles that can take six people or something. So if needed, that would, and I suspect that that will be available on occasion.
I know this is only two handicap parking spaces.
I believe there are three.
Is that correct?
There are three.
One, two. One, two, right there.
C, three.
I think you're looking at the existing conditions plan.
I know.
So that number of steps between the lower parking lot and the clubhouse are actually being reduced quite a bit. Mark probably knows how mu, how many?
You need to come up here, Mark, and answer that question. The current existing driveway that goes up to the front door, we're reducing the level of that driveway by five feet, and so that'll reduce the number of parking, the number of steps coming from the lower parking lot up to the main level. So there's an overall height of the building will be basically the same as what it is, you know, right now. So I want to say in, basically at seven, seven inches on each step and five feet, that's probably in the neighborhood of eight steps, nine steps that we're eliminating. So it'll be a shorter distance going from a lower level parking lot up to the main level of the entrance to the, to the new clubhouse.
What was the calculation used for the number of parking spaces for a facility like this?
Well...
You mentioned it's going to be bigger, but what...
It is, and there will in fact be more seats in the, that are potentially available, but the intention is to create different opportunities and not to create more use. But let's assume that all 312 seats, that it will be in the building. That includes, by the way, the deck porch looking to the north, the deck and porch looking to the south, the bar seats, informal dining areas, and the maximum banquet capacity. All of that comes to 312. Under our current...
How many?
All of those come to 312 seats. Under our current zoning bylaw, the requirement is one space for every two spaces. That would make, 156 being the requirement, we are proposing 123 spaces on site. We have unapproved 44 spaces across the street, so we're already up to more than would be required, even if we needed a space for every seat. And there's additional parking, as I said, at a separate maintenance building across the street. There's also other spaces to park on site which haven't been counted. There's areas along here which allow for parallel parking off of the driveway, but we're not counting those. The club thinks that it has adequate parking. The club thinks that it doesn't need to pave more surfaces. We don't want to have more parking than we need, and we shouldn't be required to have more parking than normal demand requires. The club has the capacity of constructing more parking in the place that it would be, would be in wooded areas along Quissette Avenue, right near the entrance to the club, and we considered that and drew plans to show another 40 spaces over there which could have been paved. It's a terrible idea in what it would do to the entrance to the club, and it just isn't necessary. We come back to the fact that the zoning bylaw, including its parking regulations, shouldn't be applied to this project because it's pre-existing nonconforming use with a conforming structure. That's an awfully long answer, maybe much longer than necessary, to your question about how many parking spaces are required. So if every seat were filled, even though that's never going to happen, 312 seats, 156 meets the bylaw, 123 are shown on site, we have more parking available across the street. We think we're fine in terms of parking. Nobody is going to be parking ever out on Quissette Avenue. It's an impossibility, and there'd be no impact on the neighbors by the fact that this building is bigger. We are creating more dining opportunities, and it does result in more seats. A bunch of those seats actually are also in a lounge area, which is really informal seating, soft seating that we've counted because you could sit there and have a drink, you could have a meal there, but again, we have a lot of different opportunities for dining in the building. To enhance the experience of being at the, at the club, but we're building a better clubhouse, better in many ways. We don't expect to have, the use isn't changing, and we don't anticipate a change, any adverse impact on the neighborhood.
Does the 312 seats include the proposed tent area?
No, it doesn't.
That's additional seating.
If there was an event that, again, that'd be unusual, abnormal conditions, there are virtually relatively few functions of, that would require a tent. The club has made it a policy to limit the number of functions that basically take over the club from the membership during the season, and we're talking about shoulder season when there aren't many people here.
The only comment I would make is you talk about additional parking along the existing paved driveway. That's not a very good idea for emergency vehicles.
I'm sorry, for...
You mentioned about, you're not counting parking along the existing access road. That's not a very good idea for emergency vehicle access to the facility.
The driveway itself is adequate and within. Any parking I've described, including when I mention additional, is entirely off of the paved surface.
Ralph, did you have some?
No. I see you've got new fire hydrants and new lighting up the, up the driveway, is that correct?
Yes, we do, including a fire hydrant over, I think it's on the plant, in this location.
Right.
Anyone from the public wish to speak? Yes. Come please, please come up to the microphone and identify yourself.
Debbie Ward, 6 Gansett Road. I guess I'm the closest, maybe, a butter. This is, I just don't understand why they can't, this is a beautiful historic building, and I don't understand why they can't work with it. It seems to be the issue here are parking spaces. I don't understand why people can't, you know, they can't make parking spaces and keep the building or work with the building, and another thing is that every truck that rolls by, when they demo the building and rebuild the building, is going to roll by my house. So...
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Nancy, excuse me, Nancy Hayward?
Nancy Hayward Westfalm, the only comment I have to say is that this is an historic building. It is listed with Mass Historical Commission. It was neither here nor there. I'm sorry, it was late, so I didn't hear the start, but I gather from the part who just spoke that the building is being demolished. And I just wish to say that that really is too bad because it is an old building from nineteen twenty-one, and it is a listed building, and...
I need to remind everybody, this is not a historic district.
Yes, sir.
It's site planned.
Yes, sir. I am totally aware that the historic district is at the northbound of the golf course. Thank you.
Yes, would you like to speak again?
Again, my name is Mark Kissel. I am a member of the Woods Hole Golf Club and also Vice Chairman of the Building Committee. Starting approximately three years ago, we did a, I think, quite a comprehensive thorough evaluation, looking at the existing building, and many of our members had voiced a concern at that time, is there a possibility that we could renovate the building and save the structure? Approximately, probably ten years ago, we did go through the building and we did do a lot of renovation to it. And following that, it was determined that we probably spent somewhere in the neighborhood of two million dollars in doing that. And quite honestly, several members said that we, we wasted a lot of money. Recently, in the last three years or so, we did a thorough engineering analysis of the building, looking at the mechanical systems, looking at the foundation, looking at the whole structure, and adding up all of the deficiencies that the building have, we came to the conclusion that it would be, again, wasting a lot of money to try to repair a building that, as Bob mentioned, is almost a hundred years old, is in, is in very difficult condition. We, in many, many instances, from electrical capacity to air conditioning systems to plumbing systems and so forth, we're really not up to the codes that we'd like to be up and up to the codes of, of the town. So with this new building, we're going to solve, obviously solve all those deficiencies. We'll have bathrooms on the main operating floor, obviously, as well as bathrooms connected to the, to the new locker rooms and so forth. So I know it's a, it's, sorry that we're, we've ended up with this conclusion, but it's clearly in our mind, the members' mind, it was the right, right decision that we tear the building down and put up a new structure, so.
Anybody else? Yes, Ralph?
I do have one question. Should we assume then that the model over there is the same as if we would get renderings of the building? Because the planning board has now assumed some of the roles of the design review committee, and so I just wondered if aesthetically speaking, if that represents pretty much what the building is going to look like, or is that just a temporary model?
No. I'd also like to point out, I'm quite sure that we have submitted to the planning board the elevations for the structure.
Thank you. I haven't said no. Okay, thanks.
Can I have them here if you'd like to look at them?
No, I, not now. I won't, I'll look at them some other time. I can see that, too.
All right, that's it. Anyone else? Okay. Waiting for a decision, yeah? Bring it forward, yeah? Thank you, that's it for tonight. The next is building elevations in the FEMA hazard zone. We have our Building Commissioner here to review the subjects with us.
Can we take a quick recess so we may look at this? Because they don't want to leave this model here.
Go ahead, yes. We'll recess for five minutes. Sorry about that. For those of you who haven't had time to look at.
I can point out to you that the architects for the new building, the same architect that did the pro shop, whatever it was, seventy-nine year, eight years ago, CBT from Boston, and this structure will complement that. Redwood roof, this is, and here, the eternal, the changing, the side, the changing, the changing. Face, the pro shop, with some stone elements, chimney, first, these other, the lost boxes are not actually chimed, but they're part of it. Now, the lower level, we have around the same kind of stone, and then the pro shop, all along the whole facing of this side, towards Mr. Martin's apartment, and this side here, the dining room, these, we have the merchant doors, and also the kitchen hall. And then, yeah. The dining room, this is, yeah. And then, 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 yeah. I've got a lot of interest, but they can't get the money, no agreement, long ways away. The seller doesn't have to sell right now. He's really old about it. He's trying to do another deal. The Thai guy was only a tenant.
I wanted to see it light up.
Okay. Ready? We're calling you back to work. Thank you for that. Mr. Gore, we're ready for you.
I'll lead in.
Okay.
So as you know, we were going to have this discussion a few weeks ago, and I sort of introduced you at that time, that the changes in the building code is why Aladio is here. There are folks who want to be able to comply with the code and also avoid insurance. But what we're running into is a situation where the base flood elevations in these velocity zones are such an elevation that once a person gets to the base elevation plus two feet, in some areas, you're starting at elevation two. There are these who set a cliff here. There are some folks who want to be able to comply. There are some folks who are talking about bringing in some articles or something to help me, but I just thought it'd be important for the board to be aware of the situation, have a discussion with their staff. Building Commissioner, my Aladio is here to give a little background on what I do. I think we're coming in, talking about issues that are confronting, and what issues we're going to have to discuss later. Some towns on the South Shore are, hey, we've talked to some, Marshfield, situat, Foxbury, Marshfield actually has an overly district of their point, allowing you to go up to the base flood elevation, starting at the base. How's it, maybe, forty feet? That would be some of the issues here, cultural issue here. So having said that, I guess I'd just like Aladio to brief the board as to some of the issues that are confronting us on the building code and insurance company terms.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Go ahead, you go, Building Commissioner. The, the reason that I wanted to come before the board is to make you aware of some of the things that are happening since we've had the revision to the flood maps. And to try and simplify it, the elevations went up about two feet all over town. So many of the properties that were built under, say, the fifth or sixth edition of the building code and complied are now non-conforming. They met all of the requirements for flood zone construction at the time, but now their structures are no longer conforming to that because the elevations have changed. So that's one set of folks who are concerned about the code and what effect that's going to have on their property. There is another group of folks whose house never conformed. It was built prior to the building code going into effect or prior to any of the issues having related to flood zone. Those folks are now even more non-conforming because the elevations have gotten higher. And in some cases, people, the next group of folks are those folks who were not in the flood zone, and now they find themselves in the flood zone. Because not only, because the elevations went up, they would move further inland, and so many properties that were not in a flood zone in the past find themselves in a flood zone. Some were in an A-zone, now find themselves in a V-zone. There are some folks who enjoy the opposite of that. They were in the flood zone, and now they find themselves not to be in the flood zone. So some of those elevations did change both ways, but most of them changed so that folks are now either in a flood zone they weren't before, or the elevations are higher than they were before. And so because of that, these folks find themselves between a rock and a hard place. The insurance companies are starting to take action against these properties, and they will continue to do so, especially when there is a transfer of ownership. Some folks have already received tremendous increases in their insurance, and as a result of that, they have come to the building department to see what in fact can they do so that they can comply with the flood zone requirements and thus eliminate these very high costs for insurance. Others have come because they wish to either renovate an existing building or expand an existing building. Under the current building code, there are a number of things that trigger the need to bring the building into compliance. And in the V-zone, we have the building code as well as our zoning that affects that. So under the building code for V-zone construction, if you exceed fifty percent of the assessed value of the, of the structure, just the structure, not the land, if you exceed more than fifty percent of that assessed value, then you are compelled to bring the building into compliance. So if you have a structure that does not meet the flood zone requirements, whether it was built prior to that requirements or whether it was affected by the new changes in the maps, and you have a structure that does not conform, and you wish to do a renovation. Now depending on the value of the structure, we'll use simple numbers, like a hundred thousand dollars. If you have a structure that's assessed for a hundred thousand dollars, you do more than fifty thousand dollars worth of work to that structure, then you're compelled to bring the structure into compliance, which would mean elevate the structure, get all of the mechanicals, both electrical and mechanicals, out of the flood zone, and get them up above the flood zone. You can probably surmise that to do that is probably going to cost, if you had a hundred thousand dollar house, would cost more than fifty thousand dollars to do that. And so many folks are stuck with not really being able to renovate or do any large additions to their property because of that restriction. The other thing that happens is, is that they may sustain damage to their property. And so they may want to, because of that, they may want to elevate the building, not do anything else, but just elevate it so that they don't continue to sustain damage. Well, the building code doesn't allow them to just elevate it a couple of feet, which is maybe, some people have desired just to get it up a couple of feet. If you touch the foundation, then the foundation has to comply. So whatever the base flood elevation is in your area, you would need to bring it up out of that. Because of the new elevations and the new heights, that has created a problem. So let's just say, for example, we have an existing house that is twenty-five feet tall, and we're at elevation ten on the ground, but I need to be at elevation eighteen to comply with the flood zone. And if I'm in a velocity zone, I need to be two feet above whatever the base flood elevation is. So I'm at elevation ten at the ground. I need to be at elevate, I'm in elevation V-eighteen, so I need to be at elevation twenty. So if I elevate my house from ten to twenty, and now I have a twenty-five foot tall building, I'm at thirty-five feet. That's okay, because that's our maximum height. But if I have a twenty-eight foot tall building or a thirty-foot tall building now, and all I want to do is make it comply with the flood zone requirements, with the building code, now my building, my building would then exceed thirty-five feet. And all I'm doing is elevating my existing structure to meet the code and eliminate the high cost of insurance and also protect my property in the event that there is a hundred-year storm, which theoretically would mean that the waters would get up to that eighteen feet, and in velocity zones, we'd have velocity waves pounding against the house. So that's the, the theory behind getting the buildings up and elevating them. And in a velocity zone, you do have to be two feet above, but the structural, the lowest structural element has to be at that two feet above. So we're not talking the lowest floor, we're talking the structural element. So if you have a girt that's holding up the building, that girt has to be at the twenty feet, then you've got your floor joists and so forth. So you can see that very quickly, you could exceed thirty-five feet. And so that's what we need to begin to address, because there are a number of folks who, right now, want to bring their building into compliance. And it's an existing structure, and if they bring it into compliance, they will exceed the height. So right now, their alternative would be to go and seek a variance from a height requirement. So that's one avenue. And we can continue to do that, and they can seek a variance and hope to get one. But as you know, that variance, variances are very, very difficult to get. The criteria for them is very stringent, and so relief may need to be provided for individuals, even if they were to seek a variance. individuals, even if they were to seek a variance. So we're talking about primarily existing structures who are just trying to comply with the building code. If we were to have a catastrophe, a hurricane or some other event that destroyed these buildings or even moved them off of their foundation, not necessarily destroyed them, then they would have to comply with the building code in order for them to put the building back. So do we, do all of those folks then seek variances, or do we try and plan ahead and provide some relief for that? And as Brian mentioned, there are some towns who have already done that. They have examined the whole situation and decided to pass a bylaw or modify a bylaw that would take into consideration these different types of scenarios. There is also the individual who has a vacant lot and who wishes to erect their house. Now obviously, it's easier for them to try and comply with the 35-foot. However, if you're already at elevation 20, you're very limited in what you can do for a home. You're talking 15 feet, and then you're, you know, you're at the, the maximum height. And so in some ways, it's, you know, you might say that's, you know, they're, that's up to them. They brought the property, they have the issue. But at the same time, it does limit what a person can do with their property because they, they have to comply with the, the building code's requirements for flood zone construction. We also have a zoning bylaw that addresses V-zone construction. And what that says is that if you add 200 square feet or more to a structure that's in a V-zone, that is considered substantial improvement. And therefore, the building must be brought into compliance regardless of the dollar amount that you spent. You may not exceed 50% of the assessed value of the building, but if you add more than 200 square feet, that's considered the same thing, and the building would have to comply. So again, we, that brings us back to if I'm in a zone and I have to, if I want to add more than 200 square feet, I have to elevate my building to the, to the required height. If my building is more than, you know, 25 feet, I'm probably going to exceed the height requirements. And so then do we make people rip their roof off, change the whole character of the, of the structure to be able to comply? So those are things that, that we need to consider. So there's the natural disaster, which we hope doesn't happen, but it certainly could in Hurricane Bob was 1990, so some feel that we're due. There's also those who need to remodel, renovate, and it's in low likelihood going to be more than 50% of the assessed value. As you know, you remodel a kitchen, you know, you could spend $75,000, $100,000 just remodeling a kitchen. You do a couple of bathrooms, they're saying now the average cost is almost $200 a square foot to, to do renovations. In some cases, it's $200 to $300, $300 a square foot. So it doesn't take much to get to 50% of the assessed value, especially in an older home, because the value just isn't there. And so many folks are, are struggling with what to do. Some have tried to do it in stages, but in the velocity zone, that amount is cumulative. And so they look at the total value over a period of time. We look back 12 months, any 12 months. And so it, it makes it very difficult to even try to do it in stages. And that's the reason why they did it that way is because they don't want people to be able to continue to expand and enlarge without bringing the building into compliance. The whole idea of the building code and our zoning is to try and get people to comply. And so the height restriction sort of acts as a deterrent to that, because even if I want to comply, I'm stuck because I have the height restriction. And so it doesn't encourage people who want to comply and get their building up out of the flood zone so that it, it is safe and doesn't, we don't have repeat casualties on the same property over and over, which affects all of us because we all pay for that insurance. So this is one of the reasons why I wanted to plan the board to be aware of what's going on and perhaps give some consideration to providing some relief so that these individuals can be able to bring their buildings into compliance.
I have just a question. I'm fairly familiar with this, but I thought I'd just ask you a question because it may help some of the others. Would this lead to a condition where the velocity zone, for instance, is just a front row of houses, and now those houses are going to be in a 20-foot V-zone? And now they're going to be, they, if we allow them to come up to base elevation, we'd be adding 10 feet to the, the house, so they'd be 45 feet, and the row right behind it could be an AE zone and not be able to come up? So in essence, we'd be creating a ridge of 10-foot-high houses around the water? In a, in a velocity zone with an AE zone immediately behind it?
There are some areas like that. Typically though, the velocity zone extends more than just the first row of houses.
Right.
But there are some areas, like on Surf Drive, but you've seen what happened there on Surf Drive. Those houses were all in the velocity zone, and in fact, that velocity zone has changed. It was 16, it's now 18. So if they, if they were to sustain, yeah, with the two-foot, so if they were to sustain a casualty, they would be up even higher than they are now. So there are some areas that would be like that. And then immediately behind them, they're in an A-zone, but that A-zone elevation has also increased. And so if those houses were to sustain a casualty, they would be up probably a couple of feet lower than the velocity zone, but not, you know.
Not 10, okay.
My understanding is that the FEMA maps are probably going to be redone more frequently than they were, and we are going to be experiencing increasing heights of the water as time goes on. What effect is that going to have if we change the bylaws and they comply, and then FEMA changes again in, say, five years, and it's higher now?
Everyone that I've talked with at FEMA has indicated that the likelihood of the change, it took this long for them to change the maps, that the likelihood of that to happen within the next five or 10 years is very unlikely. That is not to say that if global warming continues and the water, sea level continues to rise, that there won't be a call for a change. All of these changes are basically generated by disasters. And the disaster that happened in, with Sandy in New Jersey has prompted a lot of people looking at what previously were, were our elevations, because Sandy broke all of those rules and all of those areas that were not in flood zones or were in flood zones and the houses were constructed to that level, were all inundated with, with water. So there is a real concern, but again, what I'm hearing from FEMA is that a change in the foreseeable future is not going to happen.
Okay. I guess what I was really fishing for is when we start looking at this with redoing the bylaws, should we somehow add some flexibility for change?
I think if, if you tie to a certain extent what the bylaw is to the maps, then whatever the changes to the maps would follow along with that change, rather than saying particular heights, you're, you're talking about elevation. So based on whatever the flood zone is, the flood elevation is in that area, that becomes, you set that as, you know, the starting point, and then from there, you would set your heights. So no matter what the maps were, it kind of would, would change with the bylaw.
Thank you. And you, you talk about flexibility with the bylaw. The flexibility should really come with the insurance companies. I mean, they set this dead-on height as opposed to a range, I mean, or a range of heights. I mean, if you raised your house so it's 16, and now they raised it two feet, and you did that five years ago, I mean, that, there's got to be a range in there. So I'm going to sound like Richard Latimer here, but it's, it's more of an insurance problem.
Well, there is some, right now, the insurance companies have not started issuing full policies, in other words, charging the full amount. But I'm being told that at, when there's a sale or transfer, that the new owner is not subject to the grandfathering that the own, old owner was subject to. So current owners now have a grandfathering protection of some sort, but their premiums have gone up.
Yeah.
And it's my understanding that they're going to go up incrementally. But it's a transfer, you know, or the sale that then encumbers, you know, the, the new owners. And then again, as I said, when somebody wants to renovate their property, the building code says you, you exceed 50%, you must comply. And so it either means I can't do certain things, but again, if, if we were to even have a windstorm that took the roof off and we had to replace that, you know, it could easily be more than 50% of the assessed value of my structure. And in that case, not only do I have to put my roof back, but I've got to elevate my building, move all of my mechanicals, I've got to comply with the building code.
You mentioned the roof getting blown off. I've, I've spent a number of years going to Cape Hatteras, and you see this whole thing happening down there. And they have cottages that are 40, 50 feet up in the air. And I know building codes here, we, we have to tie the building all the way up right to, to the rafters and all that, but it doesn't seem to be anything about windage, because I've been in these houses with just a gale, you know, 35, 40 knot wind, and the thing is going like this. Is there anything about windage in any of these requirements with, with the FEMA?
Well, not in FEMA, but in the building code, there is, there are requirements that they have to meet 110 mile an hour wind zones.
Right, yeah.
And for commercial buildings, 120 mile an hour. So there is--
And Katrina was what, 150, 160 mile an hour winds?
Again, the, the building code is minimum standards.
Yeah.
And so it's designed to minimally protect the property at the minimum standards. And so those minimum standards are 110. Yes, if we get a storm that's 150 mile an hours.
Yeah, and you've got these 50-foot buildings getting blown over. Yeah. Wow.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Brian, I have a question for you. I'm assuming that this would be, yes, thanks. It would be a bylaw that we would then go through the same whole process with a hearing and discussion and--
Right, we'll probably bring some alternatives to the board, probably not looking at this November town meeting, because the war closes the first week of September. There's no easy answer here. Some towns have created like overlay districts for their velocity zones. Some have tinkered with their definition of building heights. I might need a combination of both. I'm leaning towards the Marshfield example. So maybe we can take a field trip, I can get you that example, and we can discuss it between now and the end of the year. At the next, the war, the April town meeting closes in June.
If we were going to it, that means all the butters, anyone butting a V-zone or in a V-zone would be notified? No?
No, no.
How does it, how do they find out about this?
When the board publishes an article that affects more than 10 lots.
Yeah.
Then you publish a map in the paper.
Okay, so it's a giant notice in the paper.
So we're probably looking at a, a few discussions between now and probably the end of the year. I'll use the answers here. I at least wanted to introduce the issue to the board. I have a lot here, because he's an expert on building code, I'm not. And we'll try to get some examples for you to discuss. And get it out there to the public, because there'll be many who are concerned about this. And we'll just kind of hold our breath between hurricane seasons that are in, ignoring the audio's point about a natural disaster happening, and so we're going to have a lot of folks out there, I think about 2,500 structures in a situation where you may not be able to exceed the height of it. So time isn't, we have some time, but you know, about a heck of a--
I, I know, I've looked at it, and I'm, I want to have some discussion, but I have come up with examples that there is a 10-foot ridge, not, not if the houses all get knocked down and they all have to come up, but if you choose to tear down one in a, in a velocity zone and you've got an A-zone right behind you where you're down on the ground, that new house could be 10 feet higher than the top of your roof until your house gets knocked down, and then you've got to bring it back up to the flood plain, and then you get two, then you get the two-foot differential. But it is going to create a ridge along the waterfront.
I think something for the board to discuss. You're, you're going to create some height issues.
This is only in the V-zone we're talking about, right?
We're talking velocity. That's where the, you're subject to wave action, the energy of the waves. A-zone, you have inundation or something. But we'll start with the velocity zone.
Is there anyone in the public who'd like to comment? Yes, Bob? Mr. Ahmed.
Thanks. I just want to comment on the last issue. I think that there are many cases, I know of some, that the same problem exists in the A-zone. A B-zone may be, require 18 feet, but the A-zone right next to it may be at 16 feet. And it all relates to topography of where the house is starting with. And in order to comply with the flood regulations, whether it's A or B, you may, if you spend the 50% for all the reasons that Mr. Gore just mentioned, you'll have to elevate a house in the A-zone. So although maybe that there are more cases in the V-zone, there are the same problem in the A-zone of having existing houses, which to conform to flood regulations will run up against the 35-foot height limitation. I don't think that the solution for the V-zone need not also be the solution for houses that are really in the same predicament in the A-zone. I'd be happy to provide some examples for the board to, to see what I'm saying. Same problem exists, A or V-zone.
Well, it's good. Good for now. We'll, we'll wait to see this on a future agenda.
You will, you see this on your agenda, it's a little bit sealed. Probably every other one.
Do we have anything to discuss?
I do.
Okay. Next is historic character element from the local comprehensive plan. Pat will make the presentation.
The reason that we put this on here is we want the full planning board input on this, because we've had difficulty, the committee of three, getting to where we want to be and defining it. And because this is a planning board responsibility, we really wanted your input at that point. We have spoken with the Falmouth Preservation Alliance and gotten a little bit of input, but as you can imagine, their mission incorporates a lot of things, but their principal concern thus far has been for preserving old buildings, historic buildings. What we have managed to come up with from our committee so far is what we feel is a reasonable goal that incorporates many ideas, and that is Falmouth will respect its rich historic scenic and cultural fabric while building its future. Our concern is that if we do too much looking in the past as far as what we're doing with this element, then we put a screeching halt to anything that might be getting done today that will be historic in 50 to 100 years. So our, we're having problems how to incorporate that. We're also having problems as to what people here would consider to be historic. I have some ideas, we all have some ideas, and it's certainly more than historic buildings, I believe. It's going to be scenic drives, such as Woods Hole, past the church there, and around Knobbska Lighthouse. That, I think, is scenic and historic. We have some very lovely old stone walls that are certainly historic along roadways. So we've got scenic roadways here. We've got the agricultural heritage of Falmouth. How do we incorporate that? And we want to have your ideas-- And we want to have your ideas as to whether you even think any of that is valid or not.
I think that it's very valid, and I think that when we, when we focus only on the construction details of buildings and not the layout and placement of them on the sites, I think we change the character significantly. And we had an example last year of buildings being moved and rearranged where, to the point where if you're driving down the road, if you had been away for a few years and you come back, you don't recognize it. And that's a change of character. I think that's gonna be something that's hard to incorporate, but it is important that we consider it.
Okay, so your point is that as a policy, we should be looking at retaining the character of the community?
Right.
Okay. Ralph?
Yeah, when the Community Preservation Committee was formed and we looked at the Community Preservation Act, there was no definition for historic. So we made our own, and we applied it to applications that came before us. One example was the historic documents that are held in this building in a, in the safe, the historic documents of the town. We discussed it at length and came up with a minimum that to be considered historic, it had to be at least 50 years old. All right, so the town came to us and asked us to hermetically improve the storage area because the documents were deteriorating. So we told them that they could do, they could, they could store anything they wanted in there as long as it was 50 years old. Well, how do you separate, if you have one, one area that you're gonna store these documents in, and you're not gonna build a petition between everything and every year, move it one year, you know, you're not gonna do that. But, and we understood that. But generally speaking, when, when people came to us, we, we made sure that they were, that the, that the application applied to things that were at least 50 years old, and it also applied to when the library came to us for certain documents, and also the historical society, when they came to us. So we always applied the 50-year rule, and that's still in effect for the CPC, so that they can determine, you know, they have, we have 50, sorry, 10% minimum, the CPC has 10% minimum to spend on historic preservation every year. So if, you know, you could use that as a starting point if you wanted to, if you wanted to put a, if you're looking for a definition and you wanted to put a figure on it, you might wanna consider that. I think you might also want to ask the, the Community Preservation folks that are, it's not an alliance, but it's, it's like that, and it's in Boston, and they've been around, and they, they work with all of the towns that have adopted the Community Preservation Act. And it's, it's a coalition, and they could give you some input on more than just our town, but what other towns have come up with this for, as far as a definition for historic.
Corey was going to be looking at examples for us, too.
Sure.
That, you know, reaching out to what other communities have done, so similar to what you're suggesting.
Yep.
So Ralph, what was the name of that group again you said we should talk to?
It's the Community Preservation Coalition.
For the whole state?
It's for the whole state, yeah. It's a, it's, it's a nonprofit organization that was started to advocate for the act and to encourage towns and train towns on how to adopt the act. And they've been around since the act started. And every town that has adopted the Community Preservation Act pays dues to that organization, and they lobby, and they also provide training, and they also provide guidance when you have an issue, just as such as this. They offer, Carol up in the Community Preservation Office can give you the contact number for them. And they're, they're on the internet. Great organization, great organization.
So Pat, could I ask you to read that proposed goal just one more time, so it stays with them, so when we bring it back, they remember?
Yeah, I will remind you that we change this as we go, too, you know, it becomes a working sort of thing, and we work back and forth. Falmouth will respect its rich historic scenic and cultural fabric while building its future. And we also had kicked around a few other things. I didn't want to change your comments, so I didn't bring this up at all, but for potential policies, Falmouth shall integrate heritage and historic character into public and private conservation initiatives. Remember, the policies are very general before you go down to the action items. Falmouth shall encourage public and private sector initiative and actions that are models for best practices in the preservation and treatment of historic resources. Another potential is that Falmouth shall take a cultural landscape approach to history and historic preservation. And we also like the alliance's mission statement potentially as a policy, to preserve and protect Falmouth's historic structures, its cultural resources, and heritage landscapes through education, advocacy, and action. So in some form, to incorporate this into a policy that then action items would come off of. The studies that we've had done are full of action items, but they aren't full of overarching goals or policies that we're looking for that will have a 50 to 100-year life in the comprehensive plan. So we're fortunate to have those as guidance. Ralph?
Well, I recall that there's been a movement to combine the Historic, Historical Commission and Historic District Commission, and that might be more appropriate as an action item, but on the other hand, if you wanted to give it more clout, you would move it up a notch and make it a policy that...
Can't, because once it's done, it goes away. We want the policies to live. So it definitely would be an action item.
Yeah, okay.
That, when you look at our old document, the comprehensive plan, throughout, there is just a mishmash and not an understanding of what's a policy, what's a goal, and what's an action item. So they're just mushed all over the place, very difficult to use it. Despite that, many things that were recommended have taken place, because people of Falmouth do have a vision, and this is what we're trying to capture.
One of the hardest things that we found as a group was just trying to define what is historical and what is the character, and so we kinda did an exercise of, if I say Boston, what comes to mind? If I say Paris, if I say London, what comes to mind when you think of those things? Don't ask Marlene about Boston, she comes up with something 30-something-ish. So, but if you think, and then go to Falmouth, what do you think when someone says Cape Cod? What do you think when someone says Falmouth? What's the first thing that comes to mind? And those are the, those are the things that we want to look at in preserve, protect, augment, whatever the policies would dictate. But, you know, that's, that's the toughest thing with this, is coming up with your definition. We batted around culture, whose culture? I mean, there's been a culture here for 10,000 years. So it, trying to fit it all into a nice tidy document has been really tough. We put this off, we kept putting this off because we knew it was gonna be a tough one. We wanted to knock off some of the easier ones first, but I'm curious as to what comes to mind members of the board when you say the word Falmouth or Cape Cod.
I think it's easier to define what's not, and you know, when you have clusters of condos in a historic district, you can tell right away it doesn't belong, although we have to make allowances for development, some things clearly don't fit.
Doug, the only thing I'd mention is condos are a form of ownership, and they're not, not structures. So when you're saying clusters of condos, you're not, you don't care about they, how they, how they're set up owner-wise, you're talking about the look of the building?
Just the fact of, yeah, the look of the, the large groups of, groupings of buildings that are obviously not old houses.
Okay, so the question is lots of buildings on one site?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, modern-looking arrangement.
This is where we've run up against it headlong, because you don't want a Cape Cod cottage or a Federalist, every house being a cookie cutter sort of thing. And one of the things that I know I pointed to in these guys, yeah, the, on Quiston Avenue, that very, very, very modern house there with angles and flat and stark modernism, 50 years from now, that's gonna be looked at as perhaps historic.
Perhaps.
And this is, this is the kind of thing we're dealing with, as Bob points out, aluminum siding, that old heavy aluminum siding is historic. I hated it then, I hate it now, but it's historic.
And you look at the dome down Woods Hole.
Right.
And people wouldn't wanna tear that down, because Buckminster Fuller designed it, and as well as a couple other houses down there that don't fit the colonial style or Victorian style or anything that was a style at that time, it is historic, significant. So, you know, that's, that's another word we bat around, too, is what's significant? What constitutes something that's significant? I would like my house to be significant someday.
And we all have our own opinions, but I just don't agree with that opinion on that house in Quiston Ave. That's just...
I'm not saying that I agree with that.
No, I know you're not, but...
But Doug brought, Doug brought up the crux of, when it comes to the character, and Jim has said this, you know when you're in a historic district.
Right.
And that job that happened out in West Falmouth, there could have been a better way of designing that so it fit into the greater sense of that stretch of road. Instead, it just became like it was out in the middle of a field somewhere in Kansas, where they just plucked these buildings in there, and it was the easiest way for them to do it, and there was absolutely no thought of creativity in actually making it fit into the character. It doesn't have to be the exact replica, but it should be the character. And I think we saw that with the fight over the CVS, we used the bank as an example across the street. Okay, that, that's a fairly new building, that's not a historic building, but it kinda fit in there when Christopher's was there, Christopher's was a low-line building, that whole area was, was a lot like that. And we think that we got the best result we could with the CVS, because it does kinda fit in a little bit better than the old brick one with the big sign on the side and the, what I call the picota. So that's, that's what we're looking at, is how do we, how do we maintain that characteristic of a neighborhood or of a stretch of road? And that's why I'm so eager to work on the redevelopment of T-Ticket Highway, because these are elements that we can, we can bring back in, because those of us have been around here a long, a long time ago, remember, Wells Cargo, the barn where the new apartments are, the T-Ticket Hardware Store. There were all these, and the Zelinski House, there were all these little places along there, and they're gone, and you don't wanna create Disney World, as someone once said, but you can bring back buildings that have that sense of place, that, that character that when you're driving through, you go, geez, wow, this is, this is a nice little town. I was just in Hingham the other day, and what a beautiful place that is. And it's one of the best maintained towns I've ever been in, and they've maintained that sense of character, even in the newer areas. You'd see newer places, but you drive by and you look at, is that new or was it renovated? So...
It's the Queen's Corner.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And down by 3A Marine.
Does anybody have any further insight as to what we should be trying to express? You don't like the solid group housing.
I just feel like that's the biggest change of character in the neighborhood.
Okay.
You know, you can put crown molding on anything, but it's the arrangement and the configuration of the buildings on the lot that really bring the character.
So you're saying you could have multiple housing, but it's going to be the architectural style, how it's put together, how it's laid out?
It's really not just the architectural style, because I think these buildings that we're referring to have that, and that's what I'm saying, you can't just put crown molding on it, and I hate to say it, but you're gonna have to limit development in these areas if you wanna maintain historic character. So that's not a popular view, but I think that's something we haven't explored. Because we're, we feel now we're bound to allow development in these areas, whereas maybe perhaps we shouldn't. Maybe there should be more development in other areas and less in these, what we consider historic landmark areas.
Okay.
Okay.
You had asked, what do you think, you know, the question you guys were asking, what
do you think Falmouth is?
Yeah.
I've been all over the place in New England, in different places, and there's a lot of small towns. I think of Falmouth, when you think about Falmouth, I think about the Village Green. I think about driving down that little street and you look at Eastman's Hardware, whatever, that old building, but it remained the character. It's nice, it's usable. I think about the pond, Lawrence School, what they did with that, the Mullen Hall School, you know, they, they maintained it. That is the historic view, I think, of Falmouth, the lawn on the library. And I think a lot of people, when they come to Falmouth and they come through other areas, they come to that and they go, this is nice, and we have the water, our oceanfront drives. That's what I think of Falmouth. So like you said, I think there's areas that development is happening and we, we can't stop development, but maybe we need to put something in there to stop it from being unlike it is.
You mentioned driving into town, when we come in off of 28, when that was rezoned, business redevelopment, that could have become strip mall city, like you go into many towns, you're driving through, you, you come off a main drag, and it's the Chili's, the gas stations, the McDonald's and all that, and then you might get to a little place with a Village Green. We do a, we've done a real good job.
Yeah.
With some really nice reuse of buildings and maintaining the character in residences and everything else along there. And that's, that's an example right there of what, what can happen as well.
Right. That was a, that's, that's what I was thinking about when the whole process came up.
Yeah, I always think of Village Green.
But a smooth transition to it.
Yeah, somebody that's born and raised here, in their 80s, they'll tell you there's too many trees. If there weren't as many trees, then they would grow up.
Yeah, well, a long time ago, it was grazing land.
Yeah, yeah.
They're cut down for firewood.
Yeah.
The whole cap was, no trees, so it all depends on your timeframe, you wanna try to lock it in and say, this is the time I wanna preserve.
But that's our challenge.
That's the challenge, right.
So let's go back to 1929, cut every tree down.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because our, our challenge is saying, history is now, historical is now. And how do we capture now with what we're trying to do in historic element?
I don't really feel that's the case. I feel like history is more traditional. I don't agree with, like I said, that has, that new, modern structure. I think traditional construction and, I don't think 50 years is enough, I think more like 100 or 200 should be our target.
Okay.
I think that way, too. I think about the Rockefellers, what he preserved today, he saw it, and that's what we think of history, the 1880s, the 1910s, stone, and I do believe, yeah, 50 years may not, I don't think that's enough, for what we're thinking of maybe for a goal.
One of the things that we had talked about before that I know the selectmen didn't understand, and it was very difficult to express, is remember when we said quality building? They didn't understand what we meant by quality building. It meant... It meant something like a stone church that's going to last for 300 or 400 years, that the building would last for a long time, whatever building we did. If we look to the agricultural heritage, which we also think is important, because that was a very big part, well, part of the cranberry bogs have been preserved, but the farms are disappearing. We used to be an incredibly large strawberry-growing community here. We can't decree that Andrew's Farm is going to be maintained forever by the Andrews family, and they've got to keep on farming. We can't do that. So how do we even hope to preserve that part of our heritage?
And when you look at East Falmouth and the agricultural history of it, about the only architectural element left is the Emerald House, just that one little house, just in there two weeks ago. So...
Ralph?
We have a staff person now who deals with historic. Does Corey sit in on your discussions when you're dealing with this element?
Yes, he has. Yeah, and that's what I said, he's going to search how others are dealing with this.
The last two meetings, he's been there.
You asked a question of what do you think of, when you think of Falmouth, and it's a very difficult question to answer, a little bit like the parable of the blind man and the elephant, grabbing the tail or some other part of the body. It is difficult, but one of the driving forces appears to be the work that was done in Main Street downtown Falmouth, putting the power poles behind it and improving that area, and that's a huge attraction to town. Then you go on, there's boating, golf, and all the other things, but there's a real attraction of people wanting to come here. A lot of people bypass and go to the vineyard, never even stop here. That's probably okay, too. But the attraction is to come into downtown Falmouth, some of the other villages of Falmouth that are really, I think, draw a lot of tourists in, which is, and we are still a tourist economy. Now, you can't stop development, you've got to give people opportunities to build and do different things, but I think it has to be done in a very thoughtful process, paying attention to not only what's in the interest of the town and historical preservation and so forth, but any one of those shouldn't govern any decision by itself.
Well, we just wanted to bring it forward so the next time, just for discussion, so when we bring it forward for approval, we've at least got your comments already. Because it's, we wrestle with it. Anything else you want to say, Pat?
No. I would hope that they had written it tonight, but darn!
You know, I don't want to infer in my comments that, you know, recent development isn't done thoughtfully. I think it is done thoughtfully and within the regulations that we have, but maybe we should consider some different regulations that might scale things down.
Or in certain areas, allow scaling up, but in certain other areas, say, uh-uh, not here.
Right.
Thank you all.
Okay.
Got something to chew on for tomorrow?
General Correspondence, was there anything? Nothing's in the folder, it's empty? Next meeting, July 27th, with the Board of Selectmen, so this is done?
I know, this was scheduled to be today with Doug Jones at 4:30. I don't have the results of that date, but I will inform the Board as soon as I have it.
So it's still tentative?
It's still tentative.
Chairman, can we get some input as to what it is that's on the agenda?
Oh, that was my next thing I wanted to talk about, is agenda items.
Because we seem to have to, last minute, go to these meetings, is that really being fully prepared?
Right now, we're trying to correct, trying to, and for sure, we'll sit down with Jim and with Doug and put together the agenda for the Board.
Well, let's, because there won't be a time that we're together before that, what items would, let's everyone...
Well, whose meeting is it?
On Monday, it's there.
It's there, so they set the agendas, so...
But we can, I can ask for items when I...
Well, they just set the time of the agenda. We set the meeting agenda.
I think you'll find that they're going to listen to us, we're...
Well, they do, I think they're great. I think the Board of Selectmen and our Board are very happy about that. I'd just like to be better prepared when you go to those meetings.
But what would you like to see on it?
There's a whole host of things.
Give me your number one.
Well, what's going on with the traffic study in downtown Falmouth?
Okay, that is definitely on, that is something that's coming up all the time.
What's going on with the county commission study that we were looking at for Spring Harve Road and Going Out? We haven't heard that in a long time. There's a lot of issues like that that are sitting out there that we never seem to...
So Spring Harve Road traffic study? Here's my opportunity to remember what you said, and if Doug asks me, I can say these are the things we want on it.
Well, there's two.
Are other people housing supposed to be part of that element?
Yeah, housing is.
Absolutely, the two things, I can tell you that I want to talk to them about, what I brought up all the time is on the housing. I'd like to talk about the accessory apartment and see if there's a way we can work on that, if they're in favor of it, I'd like to charge Brian and staff to, you know, take a first draft at it and then start a public discussion.
We're just trying to set a time and date, and for sure, we'll sit down and get an agenda.
Right, no, I know, but I'm trying to address Paul's concern that he didn't have some input, so given to him.
We'll probably not be able, McMahon is not scheduled to come back until September. And the commission probably won't be ready until September. They've got the staff, and she's down there. I know the Board wants to talk to the selectmen about the transportation element, because the local comprehensive plan committee are working on that, it's ready to go. Right now, we're trying to schedule a date that they could have here on the Friday. And I will be in touch with Jim and Doug, so I hear the Board, so maybe discussion items can be cooked.
Is that something that we could send out to everybody well in advance, so that...
Right now, for sure, if there's going to be a joint meeting, one of the things more likely we'd like to have on there, like, because it's done, is the transportation element. And we'll have a copy of that. I don't know what's on their minds. I'm trying to get whatever information they want to discuss with you well in advance and leave. If we can't, then we're not wedded to the 27th, we will see you in September, and that way you'll have, that actually might make some sense, because the commission will be ready, McMahon will be ready, but there's some pressing issue we might get done on 27th, we can certainly try to schedule it.
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm sorry, what were we waiting for to begin the housing discussion?
We were. It was traffic, it was the McMahon study on 28.
Okay, I thought there was some, something holding up, putting the housing up.
They mentioned one right after the other, together.
Okay, so the housing could be a topic, possibly.
Yes. It was sequential, not by importance, just one after the other.
Okay, I move to a chair.
Second.
All in favor? All right, closed. Thank you.